I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. All rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, next is roll call.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Here.
And Councilmember Woodard.
Attending remotely via teleconference.
Thank you, that concludes roll call.
Thank you. Next is public comment, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
No one has signed up in person, and if there's anyone in the online audience who'd like to make a comment, please use the hand raise tool. Going once, going twice, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. All right, so next is consent calendar, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, move to approve the consent calendar, items A through H.
Second. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And one more?
Aye.
And now all opposed? Motion carries. All right, next is our Sound Transit project update, and we have two people from Sound
Good evening, Mayor Wright and members of the council. I'm pleased to be here tonight to provide an in-person update on the progress of Sound Transit's Linwood Link extension. My name's Randy Harlow, and I'm the Executive Project Director for Linwood Link, part of Sound Transit's Department of Design, Engineering, and Construction Management. And joining us remotely this evening is Deputy Executive Project Director Josh Patagus. And as we go through today's presentation, please feel free to interject or interrupt to ask questions at any point along the way, and we'll do our best to answer them. If there's any remote, and I see there's a couple of remote council members this evening, please bear with me as I might not be able to see the virtual raised hands immediately, and you might just need to jump in and interject there. So, tonight I'd like to provide a quick update on the schedule of Linwood Link, a status report on construction progress on the project overall with a focus on elements within the city, some reports on the station artwork installation, overview of the bus rail integration planning work, and a quick look at the Series 2 light rail vehicles that will be serving Linwood Link along with our Series 1s. Although you're likely well aware of Linwood Link's scope, I thought I'd provide a short overview. Linwood Link is an eight-and-a-half-mile extension of the existing One Line rail service, which currently serves Angle Lake to North Gate, and extends from the North Gate Transit Center to the Linwood Transit Center. There are four stations along the route, including the Mount Lake Terrace Station, with provisions for future construction of two additional stations at northeast 130th Street in Seattle, as well as 220th Street southwest in Mount Lake Terrace. We're currently projecting service to begin in summer or fall of 2024, with daily ridership between 47,000 and 55,000 across the extension by 2026, and the ability to handle up to 67,000 additional daily riders from what the existing system can handle. Approximately 5,000 of those boardings daily are expected at the Mount Lake Terrace Station alone. The asterisk that you see on the slide there is note that our ridership projections haven't been updated for post-COVID travel patterns, so take some of these numbers with a grain of salt. In addition to the travel times that you see here, the projected travel time from the station here in Mount Lake Terrace to North Gate is projected at roughly 10 minutes. While service is expected to eventually run every four minutes between trains during peak periods, the construction issues that we're facing across I-90 that you may have heard about will prevent us from activating the Two Line, meaning that initial service levels will most likely align with the current One Line frequency of eight to 10 minutes at peak between trains. This slide shows our baseline schedule with rail service projected in the latter part of 2024, and as we sit today, construction is nearing the 85% mark, with field work for the system's construction contract well underway. We're expecting the station finishes at Mount Lake Terrace to be completed in early summer, and we project reopening the rebuilt permanent park and ride in time for community transit service change in September of this year. This slide includes a graphic that we've used since the early open houses to provide a snapshot of how the construction sequence for our elevated extensions typically proceeds. As you can see by our list of milestones, we've come a long way this past year despite some of the headwinds that we faced between the pandemic's new normal and the concrete strike in quarter one of 2022. We've shifted into the third and fourth stages of this graphic, and we're in full swing building the stations, garages, and supporting infrastructure, as well as installing rail and traction power. At this stage, we're nearing completion of most of the physical elements, and the latter half of 2023 will see a transition to systems work and testing. Last May, in close coordination with the State Department of Transportation, we closed each direction of I-5 on successive weekends to remove the false work, the temporary supports, from the I-5 overcrossing structure that will carry our light rail vehicles from the east side of I-5 to the west side, located just north of the Transit Center here. We have a long way to go, but getting the structure in was one of the biggest risks that we identified during the planning and design stages of the project, so I'm pleased that our contractors were able to complete this scope of work safely along the way. This slide shows a few of the different types of rail installation across the extension. The photograph on the left shows some of the direct fixation track work used on our elevated concrete structures, including the overcrossing we just saw on the previous slide. And in the center, you can see some of the ballasted track work typically used in at-grade portions of our extensions. On the right is one of our double crossover installations, the diamond-shaped track arrangement that allows trains to switch tracks from northbound to southbound and vice versa. There are five of these throughout Linwood Link. This slide shows the systems work that currently falls on the critical path for the Linwood Link schedule. On the left are the overhead catenary system, or OCS, poles and electrical cables that provide power to the trains once in operation. These cables, currently under tension, will be energized later this year. The center photograph shows a member of the electrical subcontractor's crews installing cabling for the signaling system, the system that allows us to detect where trains are located on the alignment at any point in time, also to activate the rail switches. On the right is a photograph of one of our communications rooms, where the fiber optic and copper communication cables that link our system together are being hooked up. In this slide, I'm going to turn our focus to the station site. In particular, this schematic rendering shows the station area in gray, superimposed over a site plan of the permanent park and ride lot. The future Gateway Plaza site that's being constructed by the city is highlighted in orange, and the existing parking garage is visible in the top right of the screen. Veterans Memorial Park is shown in the lower right, and the current interim park and ride can be seen at the bottom center. Bus circulation through this site will be clockwise. Most of those same elements are also visible from this drone shot of the construction site, albeit with north rotated to the top of the screen. And although I'd love to tell you that this is a current photo, it's actually from the end of March. The April version was taken on on Overcast Day, and it didn't have nearly the clarity, so I thought this would give a better overview of the site itself. The next few slides are going to go back and forth from our early design renderings like this one to current construction progress. This shot is an aerial view of the station looking southwest. And while this photo looks directly west, you can get a feel for the progress of construction of the station itself. This rendering is of the view from the I-5 off-ramp onto 236th Southwest, with the art panels visible crossing the roadway. And this photo shows the current progress from approximately the same orientation. You can see the art panels on the underside of the guideway here as well. This rendering shows a view of the platform looking north. You can see the blue metal paneling enclosing the guideway, the glazed, overhanging canopy, center wayfinding kiosk, as well as the tactile warning tiles along the edge of the platform. And here you can see the current state of those same elements. There were plenty of crew members in this photo that might look like the rendered people on the last slide, but I swear it was unintentional. This rendering shows the north station lobby, with the stair and escalator visible on the left side of the rendering, and the ticket vending kiosks in the background. And this shows the current progress of the area, with work underway on the escalators and framing for the ticket vending kiosks completed in the background. This rendering of the south lobby at street level on the south side of 236 shows many of those same elements. And this photo shows you the current progress of that lobby, as preparations are being made for placement of the plaza topping concrete in the next few weeks. As we've shown a few times in the past, artist Kip Kobayashi has developed an artwork that wraps around the stairs and escalators at each station entrance, and the images for the artwork are based on photographs that the artist took while visiting parks and other natural areas in Mount Lake Terrace with city staff and neighbors. You'll recognize a few of the renderings on this slide from previous slides. Some of the themes that the artist focused on during development of the work included connections and living in the urban forest. As this slide indicates, his intent was to celebrate sustainable development and the history of the neighborhood's wetlands. The work's been rendered in perforated metal panels using a rather unusual technique that creates crisp images that change as they're seen from different angles, and you can see a few close-ups of the technique in these fabrication stage photographs. This slide gives you a feel for the activities that we're looking to finish up over the next couple of months, including the ongoing mechanical and electrical installations, finalizing the track work, and getting the site restoration, paving, and hardscaping dialed in. And as the focus shifts into activation of the system, the physical work will shift more into the testing and certification activities, including making sure that our operators are familiar with the new addition to the operating alignment, as well as runtime with simulated service to ensure that the system is safe for our public passengers when we eventually get into revenue service operations. This slide, another of those pre-COVID holdovers, shows some of the planning work to integrate bus service with the new rail transit line. In particular, you can see CT's planned expansion of their Bus Rapid Transit Lines, known as the SWIFT, blue, green, and orange lines, to interconnect with light rail at the Linwood Transit Center, as well as Mount Lake Terrace Transit Center here, and to provide additional coverage throughout Snohomish County. Discussions have been ongoing for more than a year, and public outreach and engagement will be ramping up over the next few months. And this slide, while rather busy, gives you an appreciation for the work that's underway. This shows CT's new SWIFT orange line stops, including the Transit Centers at Mount Lake Terrace and Linwood Transit Center. It also shows the expanded Blue Line service, and these seek to interconnect the communities and neighborhoods that sit east and west of the light rail to the light rail spine that runs north and south. This slide shows a few photographs of the new Series 2 vehicles, some of which are already in service on the existing One Line. Linwood Link adds 34 new light rail vehicles to the existing fleet, and the Series 2 LRVs have a convex top edge, larger windows than the Series 1 cars, and boasts 70 seats, as well as more room for passengers to stand than the Series 1 cars. So this slide gives you the contact information for a few of us on the project management team, should you have any follow-up questions that we won't be able to answer here today. It also shows our construction hotline number, which will remain active throughout the rest of the project until we activate operational service. So that brings us to the end of the presentation today. Thank you again for the opportunity to speak to the council this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do we have any questions? Questions or comments? I think that Councilmember Woodard probably has one.
I do. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you, your colleague, for being here online with us in the virtual world, taking up time as well, appreciate you out there as well. My questions are not the ones that council think I'm going to ask, because I think my question was already asked, which is looking at ridership specifically. First and foremost, let me back up and say how much I love this system. If I'm not one of your number-one fans, then there's somebody out there doing a much better job of hyping you all. Every event that I go to downtown, it's almost guaranteed I'm going to take some light rail, and I always do some type of selfie, and I'd love taking a photo in particular of the John Lewis Bridge in the background, just as a reminder of the connection you all really represent, because I imagine all along the route, there are these opportunities where neighborhoods are reconnecting. So just want to give you all that shout-out and that credit. That said, this has not come at a minimal cost to you all, and so our part as riders, of course, is paying. So I'm wondering if that's getting any better, and then I have a follow-up to that. So really, I'm talking about, I know the last time we were together, the number in terms of lost revenue from people using the system as we would hope, but then not paying, we would not hope that. If that number has been addressed at all, or if you're seeing any improvements as people are getting more familiar with the resource itself.
Yeah, I think since the last time we had the opportunity to speak to the council, which I want to say was two years ago to the full council, at this point, we were struggling with revenue, fare revenue collection. We've taken steps to remedy that, including changing from fair enforcement to the Fair Ambassador system. And although we've picked up in fair compliance since the shift has been made, we haven't fully returned to the levels that we were at prior to COVID, prior to the drop in revenue service that we were seeing there. We are talking at the agency level and also with our board about options moving forward to try and enhance our compliance with revenue collection, and I'm hopeful that within the next three to six months, you'll see that there's improvement in some of that collection as our Fair Ambassador program really kicks in, and some of the new measures that the boards authorized can have a chance to unfold.
Thank you. Can I have a follow-up question, Mayor?
Go ahead.
Thank you. First, let me say thank you, and I wish you well in that process. Again, well worth the money being paid, can be more clear than that to the folks listening out there. And then also, just an early best wishes to the ambassadors. It's going to be a tough job, but I like the approach that if the person can't pay, I'm not there to tackle you, just to remind you that we all are a part of this system, and to keep it moving forward, we all have a little bit to pitch in. That's my next segue to say, one, I want to applaud the Seattle Storm and the Seattle Kraken, of course, that's probably why the Kraken are still moving forward in the Stanley Cup race, but nonetheless, they participate and cover the cost for our spectators, let's just keep it simple, super-fans is really what we are, but nonetheless, we come in all the time on the rail, and that's covered, it's a nice system set up. It seemed like the Mariners, which nobody can doubt whether or not I'm a fan of the Mariners, but nonetheless, whether the Mariners are participating in this, it's been a while, I think they tried it one time, maybe at the beginning, so just kind of wondering whether or not the Mariners, and then of course, the jogger dot in the room being the Seahawks themselves. Those are two very large fan base that I know use this system, thank you family who do that, but again, comes right back to that nexus of, but who's paying? So if we can't get the individuals, is there a way, I'm wishing you all well with this process, but are you pursuing getting some pressure in the Storm and Kraken on your side to say, hey, everybody, you should be pitching in the same way as well? Your revenue is not going to even take a dip. In fact, it'd probably go up because people aren't dropping that money in the parking lots, but you know, it's a different question. So I guess my shorter answer, if it's too late, or question is, are the Hawks and Mariners looking to jump on the board the same way the Storm and Kraken have? Sorry for these long-winded questions, it's the night.
Oh, no, that's quite all right. I'm a little disappointed that you didn't mention the University of Washington Huskies in the question as well, so.
Because I'm a dog, but thank you for putting them in that as well, I would've said the same thing about those Husky games, so right on.
Yeah, I know the conversations with those entities are underway, but I don't know the current status of them, if there's been any movement toward that, but I can definitely check in with the folks on our GCR team and let you know as a follow-up. So I'm sorry I don't have a direct response.
You know, that's okay, you've actually answered my question in terms of, because I'm not going to benefit, even though I seem like I'm getting some type of kickback here. Really, this comes down to, it's a wonderful system, it's going to make everything better, you start thinking about road damages, I mean, we know all the arguments, but at the same time, the benefits are much higher than that. So just wishing you all well, and thank you for your time.
So I just want to say that I did witness the Fair Ambassador at work on one of the times that I wrote light rail recently, and the person was very, very nice and kind and patient, and the rider did not pay. He said he did, but he couldn't provide proof, but I did witness that, and so I know they're out there, and I guess they're trained that way, right?
And they'll take identification and record it, and if they prove to be repeat offenders, that's where escalation can take place. The first warning is generally like you've described, very, very kind upfront, provide information to the individual to allow them to make the right choice the next time around.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, appreciate you being here, Randy and Josh, right, online. Very nice to have you both, and appreciate the update, and super excited to be able to take light rail all the way from home to work, and hopefully the not-too-distant future. I guess I did have a couple of questions. One was, you mentioned how many riders we were anticipating here in Mount Lake Terrace getting on at the station, can you say that again?
Yeah, it's roughly 5,000 daily boardings.
Okay. And then I was just curious, I know you outlined some of the changes that Community Transit has been making with their SWIFT line, and I don't know if this is, you know, a fair question for you or not, but I'm curious, kind of one of the things that we've had conversations around in the past is, how are we getting folks, right, from our community directly to light rail? And so I guess I'm curious if there's been any additional conversations about local service, and getting folks from Mount Lake Terrace specifically to our light rail station.
I can't address the specifics of Mount Lake Terrace. I do know that Community Transit is looking at their entire network, not just the SWIFT lines, to increase that east-west ridership to bring people to the spine to get on light rail. Hopefully, that's the case, that that integrates with Mount Lake Terrace, and I assume that it does, but I don't have the specifics to be able to help you out there.
Absolutely fair. Maybe a good follow-up for us would be to invite Community Transit in to give us an update on how that work is going. I guess another question is just around kind of service. You talked about some of the potential kind of service timelines when we first opened, and some of the challenges with the I-90 crossing. I guess for those of us that maybe aren't following super closely to some of those, can you talk about kind of where that process is at, and how that potentially impacts us here in Mount Lake Terrace?
Sure. The way, I'll start with the end first, and then kind of back into it. The way that it impacts Mount Lake Terrace is the way that it impacts the entirety of the Linwood Link extension, and that's the, it will only allow us to open the One Line at the opening of Linwood Link, and that's the north-south run. So it'll, because I-90 is being worked on, it eliminates our ability to connect to the east side, and so that Two Line that normally would have taken traffic or passengers over to the east side won't be available until that I-90 work is completed, and we can open the East Link extension. So what that means is, with only one line running, it's, the intervals between trains are going to be twice as long. So instead of four-minute headways between trains, as we projected a few years ago, we're now looking at eight-to-10-minute headways to start, which is the same frequency of service downtown now, just until that East Link is available. Part of that is train availability, and as most of the 34 new vehicles that Linwood Link is procuring will be used on that Two Line, and they'll be staged in the operation and maintenance facility east, which is located over in Bellevue. And so without the connectivity of rail, it's difficult to get those trains over, particularly in a service condition. Does that answer the question?
I think so. And then, so, when would you anticipate getting to the headways that initially were forecast here in Mount Lake Terrace?
Upon the completion of East Link and activation of that Two Line, we'll be able to have those headways immediately upon that availability. I'm not sure of the current schedule exactly, but I do believe it's somewhere in mid-2025, so it'll be roughly a year, year and a half to get there.
Great, thank you. Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and yeah, I want to add in just how excited we are as a community, as a city, as a city council, for welcoming Sound Transit and the Light Rail Station to Mount Lake Terrace. Following up on the ridership and the 5,000 boardings, how many, and kind of the connections, and making the connections and getting people there, can you kind of break that down as to, out of the 5,000, or percentage-wise, how many are we expecting to actually be coming in from, you know, using other services, transit, et cetera, to get there, versus how many are we expecting to park, and remind us how many parking stalls we have available, or will have available?
Off the top of my head, in the existing garage, and
Yeah, altogether.
I believe there's a little over, a little over, is it 600 or 800? So obviously, I should just not speculate, but.
Randy, it's in the 800 range when you take the existing parking lot and the new parking lot that's under construction.
Does that include the Shoreline one?
No, that's just the existing Mount Lake Terrace garage.
Existing, okay.
And the surface.
The existing and the additional parking that will be provided around, right?
That's around 200.
Not just the garage, but kind of the
The park and ride lot that I was showing earlier.
Yeah, okay. So altogether, it's about 800, roughly 800 stalls. So that's about 20%, a little less than 20% of the ridership will be, of the boarding, daily boardings will be parking stalls, or coming in, driving in. So we're expecting about, so more than 80% to be accessing it through transit?
Yeah, I do have some of the numbers, and so the bus ingress and Yeah, I do have some of the numbers. And so the bus ingress and egress are expected to be about 1,000 of those 5,000 boardings with walk egress about 500.
Okay.
And that's out of a peak hour of 2,900 out of that 5,000.
Sure. And the walking boarding, is this based on current development or projected development?
The numbers that I'm quoting are as of 2030. So it would incorporate some of the projected growth of the community around. But again, those are pre-COVID numbers.
Right. Now, so 2030, but we're talking about 5,000 ridership as of 2030 or when we open?
2026 is our current projection for the 5,000 daily borders.
Okay. Very good. Thank you. And then just looking forward, so I recognize this is all about Phase Two, but looking into the future and looking at the provisional station at 220th, what are the steps for getting that online and functional? Where are we at and how do we make that happen?
So the primary thing that you can do right now is talk to our government and community relations team. So that station itself is not funded at this point through the ST3 ballot measure. We'd have to go into if there is one, an ST4 ballot measure. At this point, I don't know that one has been floated. I don't know that there's development in place, but talking to and mentioning it to both surrounding community members and to our GCR team would be the right way to go. And I can put you in touch with Eric Ashley.
Yeah, I was gonna say, give Eric a heads up, we're coming.
Definitely.
Very good. Thank you. Again, thank you for everything. We're looking forward to having you back.
Can I go? All right. So Community Transit have, I'm on the board as an alternate, and they do have a lot of plans. And I think we really should get them in here because there's, they do listen. But we, they, there's a lot of things going on in the Linwood area, and I'm trying to get Mount Lake Terrace in there, too. I would love to have, the ZIP program is really going well, so I would love to have that down here, too. The other thing is that you answered my question, so I didn't have to ask it, about that, you said there's only one line that's going to be north and south, because I wondered how that east side line was going to go. And that's that second line, because there's going to be two, there's two tracks. And then, so that second line goes to the east side, and then the other line just goes north and south.
Yeah. One thing to note, they are going to run on the same tracks, but at the International District Station, they'll be, the east link will peel off and head east, while the one line will continue south as it does now.
Then people don't have to get off to another, they just, they just continue on the same.
If you wind up, so every four minutes, there's going to be a train going, one will go east, one will go north and south out of that. So you'll have to either make sure that you get on the right one as it comes, or you'll have to transfer at International District Station.
Okay. So we have to learn what the N, the N station is. You have to look to see.
That's right.
The N station is either going to be Angle Lake or whatever it's going to be later on, or it's going to be Bellevue or
Redmond, Texas.
Right. Okay, so we had Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you for the update. Did you say that our service in Mount Lake Terrace would begin about 2024?
I did.
Okay. So then that means that the east side will already be, have been done, because is that where they store the cars?
It is. So it will not be complete at the time that we open the station, hence the longer headways between trains.
So that's how that works. Okay, great. And then other thing, I'm sure that you've thought of things for security as far as passenger safety for other passengers that possibly might be using some drugs on the rail system as they are with the bus services currently. Is that in the works also for security reasons, things?
Yes, similar to the conversation on Fair Collection, our board is wrestling with the issue of security now, particularly where it relates to drug utilization on the trains. And I'm hopeful that in the next few months, you'll see some improvement on that. We have noticed issues on the trains, not to the level as we do on the buses, but we are taking measures to try and limit that, both with the increase in the number of security officers that are available to respond, as well as the introduction of station agents to help on the platforms of the various stations. So if you're traveling with our current extension, you'll see some improvement there on the security front. And we're going to project that into Linwood Link when it opens.
Great. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. Quick follow-up question. I appreciated Mayor Protam Wall's question about kind of how folks were getting there and appreciated the numbers you provided. I guess I was trying to do the math and make sure I was following. So you said about 1,000 are going to get there on the bus, about 500 are going to walk, and we've got about 800 spots. So that's about half of that 5,000. I guess 2,500 more folks, how are they getting there?
So the numbers that I gave for the individual modes are based on a peak hour calculation. So that's a little less, right around half of that 5,000 happens in the peak hour. But again, those projections are pre-COVID numbers.
Sure.
And we're noticing that the ridership patterns are much less based on peak hours now, as being more consistent for longer hours. So we are looking, along with our bus partners, to see how we can spread that out, to line up with commuting patterns and try and adapt.
Interesting. So I guess are there things that we should be thinking of based on those changes in ridership patterns and/or that, I guess acknowledging that there's projected to be a significant number of folks who aren't getting to the transit center in one of those three identified ways?
Yeah, I didn't talk about bikes. I didn't talk about the other modes that might be available, whether they're scooters or taxis or drops from them. So I can grab all that information for you. I just didn't bring it with me today and probably should have.
That's okay. No, I think that would be really helpful for us to think about how we're supporting our community, particularly those directly adjacent to the transit center and to the new station as we get closer to opening up. So thank you.
Yeah, I will, I will say that the bulk come from buses. Buses and automobiles are the, are the two biggest modes that we'll see.
And plus, are we still getting our bike racks at our bike, our enclosed bike storages?
There are some of those at the station site, yes.
Councilmember Salmore?
So Randy and, hello, Josh. I just have two very, very basic questions. So on page 10, do we have restrooms?
Oh, please. Let me see if I can get there. Somewhere I'll find the right button.
Oh, it's just this one that depicts what goes where, and I just didn't see restrooms.
Yeah, so I, at this particular station, because it's not a terminus station, the intent is not to provide
And we had that discussion a lot with the restrooms. And so I am very saddened that they did not go in there. When you have 500 people walking and you have people, so we will not have restrooms at all.
There are restrooms in this, but they're intended to be used for comfort stations for the bus operators.
Okay. And then we also had the discussion of having the glass panel up on top to go with the security question. And it's been a long time since we've had a report out. Is that still something that we received as a request from the City of Mount Lake Terrace? We had a huge list of requests, and I just want to make sure that that glass panel was put up there because they were going to have some blockage. So you couldn't see if a rider got on. You could not see if they were being mugged or what was going on up there. So we requested those glass panes.
I'm not sure I'm following
Maybe we should go back and gather the list of all the requests that we had with Sound Transit.
You're talking about the conditions that were placed into the conditional use permit. I follow. I just don't know that I'm following which
I just want to make sure that, you know, the restrooms were on it, the glass, and we had all these other requests. And I'd just like to go back to see what was accommodated and what wasn't.
Yeah.
Randy, I could, I could speak. So there was, there's glass on the western edge of the station. So if you're looking at it via the upper blue, there is glass there. There is noise panels on the eastern side, so the lower side, and the noise panels were required to dampen, you know, the sound of the guideway and the trains passing by. But there is glass, there are glass panels. I'm pointing to it on my screen. But along that, again, the western edge of the top blue line.
Where the black
Right, right there.
Box is, the larger black box, right where it says North Plaza?
So not, so those are sound wall panels, right? Okay, yeah, that, right there.
Right there.
So that is, that is clear glass.
Yes, the white that you see there that looks like it's opaque is a protective film.
Is that right where they're boarding at? Or aren't they bordering down a little bit farther? You said on the west end?
Yeah, this is
So they would go up?
That's the station.
And go over.
Yeah, this is all across through the station.
Wonderful.
Is this the glass that you're referring to? I'm sorry for
I believe so. We haven't looked at it for a little bit, so I'm hoping that's what we're referring to. It's really, there was some blockage where we had concern over safety, where you could get on, but if somebody needed help, we wouldn't be able to see them. And so we wanted something where we could see the passengers getting onto the rail. And if somebody was in need of help, you know, at least somebody would see them maybe from the ground view in case there was anybody up there with them. But also going back to security, too, do you have riders' security on some of the trains as well?
Yes. Security does randomly board trains, yes.
So one of the rumors I heard was some people are using it as the restroom, and some people were sleeping on it during the snow just to keep warm. Has that created any other issues with security issues?
There are a variety of issues on our operating extension, including some with the restrooms that are related to those, those types of passengers. But I'm hopeful that you'll see improvements in those as time moves forward.
Great. Thank you.
So Councilmember Woodard, you had your hand up earlier. Did you still, excuse me, did you still want to speak?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Really, going back to Councilmember Murray's question and actually tying in your remarks, which is just a reminder that when we do hopefully have Community Transit come to us, that would be a good place to ask them what their expectations are in terms of helping get people get in efficiently and out of this transit center. Because I had some conversations with them, and they point out that, well, once these extensions are open, they're going to be able to reallocate what they're doing, the same way now the big buses don't cross the Ship Canal Bridge. Buses will not be going to North Gate. You will be getting out or getting yourself to Linwood Transit, Mount Lake Terrace, or Shoreline instead of the way their resources are currently being allocated. I don't think I'm speaking out of turn. These are things that Community Transit has said in the past, now that that's the beauty of this system, is that as relief is presented through the light rail that allows them to redo their budget, and why they're looking at, I think, Everett to expand now. But nonetheless, just putting it out there that that'd be a good group to bring up that question as well, about the projected numbers by 2030 do not line up with our codes, or, excuse me, our capacity of streets, which was a tie-in as well to say, I have seen on the internet, if you will, or the Facebook page, folks being concerned about them losing their parking, that well, the natural place for those cars to go, if people are still coming, the other half, if you will, is to park within our city streets. So maybe that might be the council's responsibility to keep an ear out on whether or not we need to go to a sticker-ing system. I would not want, say, LA or DC where you don't know when is what and who is where in terms of where you can park. But nonetheless, there might be some reasonable things we can do. And we've already done that, right, with right in front of Veterans Park. They used to be parked there all day, and now it's got a time limit. So we know we have the capacity and the energy and the resources to do that.
Okay, Mayor Protam?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And yeah, just following up on a number of conversations. First of all, on the, back to the ridership, the 5,000, you said pre-COVID. Are we planning on updating those numbers to have a better picture of the new world now that we're living in it?
We have talked about it many times as to what the right timing is to update those projections and those figures. And it seems that every time we settle on the right time, there's a new shift in which employers are returning to work in person and which schools are doing the same. And so we haven't quite gotten to the point of saying, okay, we're in that balance point here. And seeing our ridership fluctuate doesn't help us get to that stage. So it's a, it's a bit of a chicken and an egg, but we are hoping to do that in the near future.
Okay, fair enough. And yeah, do look forward to having a better understanding of that. And then following up on where they're coming from and how they're getting there and where they're, whether they're parking or, I'd love to get, get those numbers and better understand, and particularly getting it all to add up, right? So the 5,000, so if we're looking at the 500 here and 1,000 there, and what strategies do we need as a city, as a city council, as a community to be working towards to ensure that we have sufficient capacity, whether it's parking or transit service, or, you know, working with Community Transit, or, you know, having enough bike stalls for, you know, if we're expecting 500 of those people to be bike riders, where are they going to park their bike? Or, you know, so it was putting the numbers together and making sure that we are doing our, together doing the due diligence so that we can do our job in serving our community and making all the connections come together and advocating for, you know, better service or more service or the kind of service we need with Community Transit and others. So I guess just having more information as we go along to put the pieces together would be really helpful.
And as we approach the revenue service date, our community engagement team will be talking to city staff about ways that we can help engage ridership and make sure that the opening day is one that is well advertised for everyone to get onboard and ride link light rail.
Perfect. Yeah, very good. We'll look forward, we'll look forward to those continued conversations throughout until opening. And speaking of opening, we're looking forward to the grand opening and celebrating that here in Mount Lake Terrace and working with you to figure out how we're going to celebrate that as a community. I did want to follow up. I thought Councilmember Salmore had some great questions as far as the, looking back at what our list was and what was accommodated and what ended up in our conditional use permits. So comparing and then thinking of, for instance, the bathrooms that were not accommodated, or is that something, and looking at whatever else was not, is that something that we can advocate with Eric again for future service as far as system improvements or transit center improvements? So in other words, when Phase Four, ST4 comes on the ballot, part of the planning is not only the provisional station at 220th, but also improvements at 236 station, like restrooms.
Of course, that is one thing that you can, you can take up with Eric. But with specific regard to the conditional use permit here, our, our team is working with city staff to go back through the conditional use permit and make sure that we've complied with each of those conditions. We're starting to get to the point where we're closing some of those out as we go along. And I'm hopeful that that process will show that the requests that came up along the way have been met and achieved.
Yeah, no, that'd be great. It would be good to revisit that and kind of review that list and figure out what, which ones we agreed to or that Sound Transit has agreed to meet and which ones got left off the list, like restrooms, and figure out how we can advocate for some of those improvements. Yeah. So that'd be great. We look forward to seeing that as well, some more additional information. Thank you.
I'll take away two actions, conditional use permit conditions, as well as the ridership breakdown.
Okay, I don't see any more hands going up. And out in, there are no more out there? Okay, great. Well, thank you. We always appreciate getting an update.
And out in, there are no more out there. Okay, great. Well, thank you. We always appreciate getting, uh, an update from Sound Transit because we can't wait for our light rail to get here.
I, I can't wait for it to be active here either. I, I also want to mention that the city staff has been uh, great about communicating with us and making sure that, uh, we can meet our obligations, uh, as well as make sure that the city's obligations are met. So they've been great partners in this work so far.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so next on our agenda is the city manager's report.
Thank you very much, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. A couple of things to mention tonight. First, um, we have, uh, signed on, I believe, to the pharmacy settlement for the, uh, the second opioid settlement, uh, from, uh, the pharmacies, Walgreens, CVS, uh, those types of things. It'll follow a similar, similar, um, structure as the first one.
It's echoing or something.
Oh.
Could you repeat what you said?
Sure. Am I too close, too far?
Well, we couldn't.
Far echoes because we only get those speakers. We don't get these speakers. So it's a resident issue.
Is this, this better?
Yes.
So, uh, first, the, uh, second opioid settlement with the pharmacies, with Walgreens, CVS, we've signed on to that, all the paperwork's in and we, it's been acknowledged by the, uh, the coordinator at the state level. So we'll be looking forward to receiving those funds shortly. I don't have a due date for you, but I will provide that as soon as I get it. Second, uh, Public Works Week is coming up in, uh, third week of May, so, uh, we'll have that and potentially other proclamations that are typically done in May here for your next council meeting on the 15th. And, uh, third, I wanted to mention one of our aquatics instructors at the pavilion. We got a really nice email today from a lady who took a lifeguard class, uh, talking about our instructor, um, uh, let me see, have his name here. Mr. Ton, uh, took a lot of time and a lot of care and a lot of effort, uh, helping, uh, lifeguarding students go through that course. So that was fantastic email. We love to get things like that. Know our Parks and Recs program, programs are celebrated here and wanted to highlight that. That was, uh, that was a great email to get this afternoon. Uh, and lastly, just following up on the discussion, I will look through the files, uh, with the Sound Transit project and find out if we can find the list of the items that council asked for as part of that project and then compare that to the conditional use permit conditions and see if I can get that to you this week. And that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does anyone have any questions? I don't see any out there either. Okay. We'll go on to, uh, council liaison reports. And I'll just start with people here and then I'll go out to, um, both, um, both of you out, out in the Zoom land. Um, Councilmember Somer?
Well, first and foremost, I want to say thank you to all our residents that voted on April 25th or right prior to that for Proposition One, which is the annexation into South County Fire. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Um, that is extremely important for the city to have gone into the RFA. I know there's a lot of work that went into it, so I just wanted to start out with that. And also thank you to about 100 plus people that helped with the cleanup on April 22nd. I know we worked closely with, uh, Dale Jeremiah out front and, uh, he was, did an awesome job. And I know I got a picture of Rory and, uh, pushing some huge, um, bushes into, uh, recycle bin. And I know I saw Erin there with her son as well. So that was a fun time. And then also the work session on the 27th. And then I had, uh, maybe under new comments just to, a couple tiny, um, small items for the workshop that came from the discussion that we just talked about with light rail. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. On April 19th, I went over to Diamond Knot and joined, uh, Economic Alliance of Snohomish County as they helped kick off officially our Mount Lake Terrace and Briar Chamber of Commerce. And that was amazing. We had really, really great turnout, lots of good folks, uh, from council and from the community and from the city. And uh, it was, I think, just a really good fo, chance for folks to connect, to understand a little bit more about the work that, uh, the, the chamber uh, intends to do as they move forward here and a chance to get to know each other, which after the last couple of years, I think folks were really hungry for. And so it was a lot of fun. They gave away a lot of great prizes. Uh, I definitely would encourage folks to check out their future events uh, on the 19th as well. Then I came over here and joined, uh, the public meeting for our, uh, public art, uh, presentations. We had four artists who shared their visions for our Gateway Plaza Park. Um, and it was really interesting as somebody who has not sat through one of those processes before, uh, and is not an artist, it was really fascinating to hear their approach and they all, I thought, had very thoughtful approaches to, you know, how they thought about our community and how they thought about the feedback that, that they were given, uh, to, to bring their visions to life. And it was, it was fascinating and I am very interested to hear uh, the art commission's, uh, kind of feedback as they go through that process. On the 22nd, uh, as Councilmember Somer mentioned, had a chance to join our spring cleanup, which was just phenomenal. Again, I think after, you know, a, a quieter year last year where we had some good turnout and a couple of years not being able to do it, it was so nice to have this room full and to have so many people out in the park, uh, working. And so just, I mean, big thank you to city staff for all of the work they do to make that happen. Uh, that is a, a huge undertaking. Uh, and it was just, it was neat to talk to, uh, some of the folks in the Ivy League and just talk about all of the progress that they've made in Veterans Park and how they are ready and looking at other options like around the city because, because they've done so much work, uh, to improve our urban forest, uh, in Veterans Park, which was really, really neat. Um, and thank you to those who helped my son, uh, go from being a little grumpy in the morning to, uh, having, having a really good time. He found a friend. So I will say, you know, always a good opportunity to, to bring kids out. And I think we had a huge, uh, collection of kiddos from all sorts of places around our community who, who turned out and, and who did a really good job of, you know, weeding and cleaning up trash and all sorts of really good things that hopefully they will carry forward with them, uh, as they move forward in their lives. Uh, I was at the work session on the 27th, uh, and then on the 28th, uh, Puget Sound Regional Council did a racial equity session. They have done a series of sessions over the course of the last year. But this was kind of the wrap-up session of this initial group of sessions. And it was really focused on kind of how are we interrupting racism and, and how are we having those conversations in, in a direct and impactful way, um, with others? And I, I thought they had a really interesting approach that I had. I've been through a lot of, uh, racial equity trainings and, and this was a new one for me. And so it's called ACT, uh, which is just an acronym that stands for Affirm, Counter, and Transform. And I thought it was a really powerful tool uh, to, to, to think about. And I think maybe worth, I think, to Councilmember Somer's point about our upcoming retreat, maybe that's something we can spend just a couple of minutes to, to review. And, and if it feels like it would be helpful to dig into in more depth, um, maybe invite somebody and who, who is a little bit more knowledgeable, but I'm happy to share my notes and what I took away from that. So, and I think that is it for my report. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Protem. April 19th, Wednesday, I also attended here in chambers, the arts presentation for the Gateway Plaza site. Um, I loved all four of them. Hard for me to decide. So what's nice is that I'm a liaison to the Arts Commission and I'm not allowed to vote. So I don't have to make those hard decisions. On, uh, the 21st, I had a city manager meeting. On the 27th, I attended our work-study session here. That's the end of our, my report. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go on to Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Thank you, Mayor. I hope you can hear me all right here.
We can.
I'll be brief and hope, hope my connection, uh, stays. Um, on the 22nd, I attended the Earth Day cleanup. That was a ton of fun. And, um, I'm really excited to see so much community engagement. And the week since then, uh, or from lots of people who were excited about that work and, and doing it and replicating it in their own neighborhood parks. That's, it's always terrific. Um, and then on the, the 27th, um, ahead of the work session, I had my city managers' meeting and, and then attended the work session. That was good for me.
Thank you. Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, let me begin by saying, uh, welcome to Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month. If you celebrate, uh, wonderful month for you. And if you don't, you need to look at yourself in the mirror and wonder why you're not celebrating. Uh, wonderful cultures here, particularly here in the Pacific Northwest. Uh, also, one that connects across the spectrum, it's also May Day and International Worker Day and May Day, which uh, the easiest way to say that if anybody actually works an eight-hour day, you're welcome. Uh, I had nothing to do with it, but I dang sure benefit from it. So, uh, thank you for, uh, those workers out there who are always looking at workers' rights. Uh, now let's get into my actual report, which is on the 19th, I had the honor of also attending, uh, the chamber uh, kickoff that we sponsored. And that was just very well highlighted, the fact that the city council has, uh, invested in our business community. And I want to report back uh, that in the, in our conversation, I think we would all agree that they were very happy, uh, to be connected to, uh, the Economic Alliance of Snohomish County and that we were the ones that were supporting that process. So uh, kudos to us for having the wisdom to make that connection and spend those dollars that way. Uh, the 19th, I had the honor to walk across the street as well to join the art demo. Uh, and I will just say, uh, kudos to the Art Commission. They're doing an outstanding job. I don't recall how many, uh, they had to whittle it down, but to be clear, they already had to make those tough decisions. Uh, and just for the record, uh, for those who weren't able to meet it, uh, these aren't, I would just say, any rinky-dink artists out there. These are artists whose work are already out there in very meaningful ways. Uh, and in particular, one that stands out to me uh, was the Osos, uh, Osos Landslide. The artist that's putting that tribute together is interested in putting her artwork here in Mount Lake Terrace. Uh, you know, I think that there are other folks like that as well within there where you can, uh, interact with their art today. And things that you haven't already realized you've interacted with, case in point, uh, the Grass Blades down at the Seattle Cent, uh, Center. How much I love those. The artist is wanting to put his work here in Mount Lake Terrace. Uh, so again, that kudos goes to our actual Arts Commission. Uh, and so more power to you as you whittle it down to either the one or perhaps, uh, we do like we did with the plaza and split it. Uh, but I think we'll probably end up going with the one based on the budget. Uh, moving forward, because people probably want to get out of there. I'm the one at home already. I just got the shortest commute ever. Uh, is I was at our Earth Day cleanup and really I wanted to, one, just make sure I acknowledged Ivy League. They did a little bit more. They actually helped organize the spaces. And they didn't just leave it at that. They actually prepped the Ivy League with, uh, talking points, if you will, so we could educate folks of they were doing that work. And it was just amazing how many groups came out, uh, how many families came out, how intergenerational it was. Grandma's working right next to grandbabies. Uh, and so in that regard, uh, Erin, your young one reminding us what it was like to do on a Saturday by being grumpy. He wasn't grumpy. He was like, this is not how my Saturday should be going. I feel you, brother. Uh, but nonetheless, thank you, everybody who put that time and energy in. Uh, and remember, the Ivy League is always open. You don't have to join us, but you can come and hang out with us that day. I, on that note, I do want to say that, uh, for what it's worth, uh, you can actually work in isolation. So even out of that 100-plus people, uh, you can find projects that are just yours. I know I got my 10,000 steps in working with this particular tree up here on 60th, uh, just putting the mulch down. Throwing in the wheelbarrow, walk it down the hill, walk it back up the hill. Uh, didn't have to talk to anybody if I didn't want to. So just kind of want to put that out there that there's other ways to engage. It doesn't have to just be the extroverts out there doing that work. Introverts for social justice. Uh, moving forward, and I'm sure you would like me to, the 24th, I had a chance to meet with Shoreline City Manager. Uh, they have a new city manager. He actually took time to come up and meet our city manager candidates. Uh, and he did want me to pass along to our current city manager, our, our wonderful Jeff, uh, that he does know he owes you lunch. And so if he hasn't reached out to you yet, he is working on that. Uh, on the 25th, I had an opportunity to sit in on the coffee chat on affordable housing that Economic Alliance Snohomish County puts on. Always amazing. I always bring that up. Uh, we're investing in that organization. They get better and stronger every day is what I'm trying to tell you. And they do a lot more, uh, than, uh, most of us actually realize. But those coffee chats, even if you can't attend, if you register, they will send you the link afterwards and it's a recording, so you can watch it. It's also just online if you want to go right to their page. On the 26th, I had the honor, speaking of Economic Alliance Snohomish County, of attending their annual meeting slash economic forecast. And I will just say that was unbelievable. Uh, the showing was great, but the actual speakers, the award winners, uh, just a lot going on in our county. And I had the honor of sitting with our mayor and city manager. Uh, and so I will just say that was, uh, a wonderful experience and I'll leave it there. I, I wouldn't have brought this up, brought in, I wouldn't have brought this up, uh, except we've been talking about this, which is just to let you know, uh, I went that same day, later that night to, uh, Puget Sound Business Journal's 40 Under 40 Awards. Our Volunteers of America Western Washington, one of our partners, uh, our CEO, our current interim CTO was CEO, was recognized as a 40 Under 40. I only bring that up now, uh, because I want to let you know I wore a suit on light rail. Uh, so that's me coming down to North Gate, making that work, getting on the light rail and coming down, going down to the showbox. Uh, which is just to say that I, I hear the concerns about the drugs and the urination and all that, but I'm also saying, you know what, that you won't actually see that every time. It's not like it's such a preponderance of it. It's going to overtake your life. Uh, and again, you can be as dressed down or as dressed up as you want to be, uh, for these types of events, just as a reminder. Uh, we're almost to the home stretch here, people. Not my fault I do so much. Uh, that said, 27th was the study session. And then on the 28th, uh, you probably feel like this space seems familiar to you, which is to say I had the honor of co-emceeing, uh, Leadership Snohomish County Step Up. And thanks to our city manager, I want to say thank you again very publicly. We were able to broadcast from these very chambers, not these chambers, the chambers you're in. Uh, which was, as I promised you all, Mount Lake Terrace would get a lot of notoriety. Well, you can't get much more than always being on screen when we come back to the co-EMCs. Uh, Mount Lake Terrace City did sponsor as well as our Mount Lake Terrace Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission. So thank you both for supporting it. And then I hopefully I brought to the table this idea uh, to broadcast from the center. But we also did that because we were having a hard time finding a space. So I do want to acknowledge thank you to the city itself. If anybody had to reschedule anything on a Friday, uh, from that room. Uh, and then also to thank Ricky and Gary specifically. Uh, if we had to do the internet only with me, we would not have had the same experience on Friday. So thank you to them for showing up a little bit early, I think. Or at least getting their day going earlier than it usually by half two, uh, to make sure that we could go live. And it was a wonderful session by all accounts. I'm a little biased because of course I had something to do with it. Uh, but nonetheless, the last pieces of the puzzle, uh, which explain why I'm still talking to you, uh, is one, I had the opportunity to come over to the former Rogers Market Space for the pop-up making local market experience. And what an outstanding uh, gathering of community and, uh, business, uh, owners coming together on what was probably a one-day rental of the weather. Uh, but nonetheless, a wonderful space and a wonderful above, uh, above the space time, uh, just to be together in the, in the food trucks and everything that was there. So I saw the mayor there and the Ryan family. So I got a chance to say hello to the Arts Commissioners. Uh, William was there from the DEI. I'm sure there was a lot more folks who were there, but uh, the, the, you know, that was a bittersweet moment because of course they found this space, but uh, the happy news is we have those proposed action billboards up, which means that space won't be available very, very often, but do know uh, per the organizers of the local, excuse me, making local markets, they are working on finding another location in the, in Mount Lake Terrace to do this again because they agree that that was a great turnout. And to see how many people from different parts of the region came in because they've been, like, kind of following this around has been also amazing. So to be part of that, uh, was just great for our businesses and great for our community. Uh, and then the last thing that I will add, which again explains why I keep talking to you all, and instead of just one, two, three things and out, which is, uh, on the 29th, that same night, uh, the Snohomish County Black Heritage Committee was kind enough, got their red and white banquet to honor myself with, uh, the STEM Award. Uh, which is, uh, basically they do a, uh, roots, STEM, and flower imagery. And the STEM recognizes, uh, kind of the middle uh, age group there. It's doing some work here in the community to help commu, community build and advance racial equity. So it was just an honor. Uh, believe it or not, it was actually my, well, probably you can believe it, that was my first, uh, public award. I've gotten a lot of internal awards, but the first time an outside organization reached out to me and said, hey, we want to honor you because we see you. I, and I will say it is exhausting, which is why I'm not there with you. I was supposed to have my city manager meeting today, but woke up with a thing sinus pressure and decided in the spirit of we are still in a pandemic, now let me come sit next to Laura and pass it to Laura who then gives it to Brian and we go around the horn. So that's why I'm not there. Uh, but you can hear, I, hopefully I'm fine because that's what Sudafed will do to you. So that said, thank you all. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. All right. Mayor Protem Wall, you're next.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, all right. So not nearly as entertaining, unfortunately. Uh, my report starts with Snohomish County tomorrow, April 26th. The primary, uh, discussion topic was the HO5 report briefing. Um, you, you've heard me talk a lot about that, but that is critically important for our comprehensive planning, uh, update process and where we're at and what's going on. And, um, looking at the housing characteristics. going on. And looking at the housing characteristics and needs and how we're going to make it all come together, and particularly the allocation from the county. So, you know, we've got the population growth broken down into a number of housing units needed to accommodate supply or accommodate the future growth. Then that is, then broken down by economic segments, which is then distributed to each jurisdiction from the countywide. So to help give you an idea, and I've been talking a lot about this, but this is critically important for us, and it's going to be our biggest challenge, I think. And, you know, as exciting as this comprehensive plan update is and the opportunities it provides us, I keep harping on, and I'm sorry to do that, but I, but there's a huge challenge for all of us in how are we going to accommodate all economic segments. So just to put numbers to it, what we're looking at based on, and by the way, we're planning on approving this at the Snohomish County tomorrow in May, but we just, so we had a chance to review it and understand that Method C would allocate roughly 2,000 units, so of both transitional and permanent housing for under 30% income. Then for the 30 to 100% income, that's an additional 2,000 units. And then for 100% to 120%, that'll be 1,100 units. And for 120% or more median income, that's an additional 2,600 units. So that, so what is that, 6,000, 7,000, roughly 7,000 additional, I'm sorry, yeah, units, that we need to figure out where we're going to, and how we're going to place those, plan for that type, those types of units in our community. And where's that, where's that growth going to go? So as much as we've done, and as exciting as it's been to, you know, do our town center update and plans for additional growth and what's all coming, we have a lot more to do. And there's going to be some heavy lifting. And it's going to have, it's going to mean a lot of conversations with our community about where we're going to plan for those additional units. So anyway, there will be plenty more on that, but I'll leave you with that highlight there for my Snohomish County tomorrow meeting. Then on the following morning, the 27th, our executive board meeting, we had another legislative update, just a report, a great report from Senator Leas and Representative Andrew Barkus about the outcomes of 2023 legislative session. We also approved the regional transportation plan project amendments, approved the 2023 project tracking and delivery, and recommended for adoption for the 2024-25 Bionicle Budget and Work Program for PSRC, which will be discussed and approved at the Puget Sound Regional Council Annual General Assembly. A reminder, that is in person, again, live Tuesday, May 30th, 2023. I know the mayor and I will be there. We would welcome you to all join us for that again on May 30th. Then that evening, we had our work session, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Okay, so here's my report. On the 19th, I attended the Economic Alliance Chamber after hours at Diamond Knot with the local Mount Lake Terrace Briar Chamber. And that was very, very well attended. And I think also very well attended by our city council. And right after that, I also attended the artists, the four artist finalists for the piece over in our new park. And very, very impressed with them. On the 20th of April, I attended the Snohomish County Citizen Towns Dinner. And the program was a PSRC update. And then on the 21st, I attended an AWC Zoom meeting on DEI. And they're really trying in the very beginnings of putting together this DEI group. I don't know if Steve Woodard was in that one too. Okay. But they're going to have more. And I think we probably should get a lot more voices in our next meeting. On the 24th, I attended the, went to Marysville and saw their new civic campus, their brand-new civic campus. And they have a new city council chamber that is, I think, three times the size of this one. It's huge. And, and it's forced, and their city hall is four stories. And then the very top fourth floor corner office is the mayor's office with the view. And then the fire department, no, the police department. And what they did in Marysville was everybody was located in various different buildings. And so they put them all into this one building. And then, so now they're selling off the other buildings. And then finally, they have a jail that is, my God, a state-of-the-art type of jail, three sections and everything. And then we got to see the area where the one person sees all the cameras so that you can see what's going on in all the areas. And it was very, very impressive. And Marysville is very, very proud of this. And it's very much needed. Let's see. And then on the, oh, and after that, we all met, sat down in a conference room and met as the Snohomish County mayors. And we had a good attendance. We had 10 in person and two on Zoom. On the 25th, I attended the, Secretary of State invited a few Snohomish County leaders. And so I attended that event with who have, I don't know what I was doing there, but it was an amazing, amazing dinner. And then on the 26th, I attended the Economic Alliance Annual Meeting over in Tulalip. And it was the awards, and it included the awards. And one of my people that I've known for a while, Amora, got an award. So I'm really proud of that. And sat with Councilmember Woodard and our new city manager. And then on the 28th, I attended the Step Up Conference that was put on, hosted by, or emceed by, Steve Woodard. And very, very impressed. I can't wait for something like that to be done in person. And, but you're going to have to find space for that. Usually it's done in some places like the community college on a Saturday when they don't have any classes. But it is something that I would love to do in person because of all the breakout sessions and everything. It's a little hard on Zoom. On the 29th, I attended the farmer's market, that one-day farmer's market, and saw Councilmember Ryan and Woodard and a whole bunch of other people who lived, who lives in Mount Lake Terrace. And for any future spot, that's what we built this plaza for, was our future farmer's market. And we were planning to close off the street. So this plaza and the street close off is the area that we had planned as our farmer's markets area. So hopefully, somebody would let them know that we do have space for it. And I did walk it. And after I left the farmer's market space, Rogers Market space, I came over here and I started counting the rows that could go in. And it's almost the same size as what is there right now. It'll be in a different configuration. So hopefully, we can start having more farmer's markets throughout the year. And I would love to see homegrown produce and so forth in our future ones, too. And that is the end of my report. And so we'll go on to new business. Does anyone have any new business? Councilmember Woodard?
Just real briefly, and tying it back to Saturday and the weather, so this might be the answer, which is just, when will we turn our fountain back on? I feel like we missed a wonderful opportunity to really show how awesome Mount Lake Terrace is with that fountain not being on. Granted, we're right back into this weather pattern, so we probably had to turn it off, but I asked the question nonetheless.
You're not on.
Did I not hit the button? There we go. We are looking at turning the fountain back on. Apparently, there's a part on back order, is what I talked to Ken about early, or late last week. I will find out more information and hopefully get an ETA for that. And the next time the weather's great, I am, fingers crossed, that we can have that on.
All right. Anyone else? Okay, I have a couple. First, I wanted to follow up on the work-study session to see whether or not we're getting, we have a date yet? Has everyone responded?
For the retreat date?
The retreat, excuse me.
Yeah, we had targeted May 13th. And the last time I spoke with council, I believe that worked for everyone. If not, for whatever reason, please let me know as soon as you can, as I'm working with the consultant to get the agenda set up.
So 9:00 AM here on May 13th.
Yep.
Okay. And yes, it is Asian American Heritage Month. And I would like to have another proclamation done about that. And so we'll work on it together. And we'll get that, hopefully, if everyone agrees, we'll try to get that done. On the, on the 8th of May, which is next week, on Monday, at 4:30 at the library for Asian American Heritage Month, the library has asked me to read one of the books for, and it'll be a book written by an Asian American author. And it's going to be about this little girl who wears a kimono to school. And so I thought that I would wear a kimono and read this book and welcome everybody. And so that'll be next, next Monday at 4:30 at our Mount Lake Terrace Library. And I, just being from Hawaii, I just wanted to say that in Hawaii, May Day is Lay Day in Hawaii. And I don't have a lei on. But I, you know, when you grow up in Hawaii and every May Day you celebrate it with your school, you always remember that May Day is Lay Day. So where's my lei? You know? And here, even though I've been on the mainland for all these years, just still, your youth is still there. Okay, anyone else? If not, we're All right. Then I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.